With that, I'd like to have people join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag. Of the United States of America.
To the republic. For which it stands.
For which it's clear.
One day.
One day.
Under God.
Under God. Indivisible. With liberty.
And justice.
And justice.
For all.
For all.
Okay.
I hope we approve the agenda, but not necessarily in that order.
Do I hear a second? Yeah, okay.
I have a, um, the typo, there is, there is a typo on our agenda. Uh, it's, it says Town Chairman Johnson, that needs to be, Mr. Jordan is still our town chair.
Good eye.
You're right.
I go by.
I do not want to go backwards in time, please.
I go by, I go by a lot of names, so.
Well, at least you're still Mr. Jay, but I would like to have that changed to Mr. Jordan.
Okay, with the consent agenda, there's still a motion. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that. Ken.
The motion is made to approve the.
I got one comment that I'd like to make, Don.
Okay.
Vicky has gone through it in the minutes of our December meeting. On the last page, EA called, they had a.
Hang on, Tim, we're still got a vote on the order of the agenda. We're not on the consent agenda yet.
Oh, he said we were on the consent agenda, okay.
Oh.
I know, he did it wrong, but we need to vote on the order.
All right. Called ordered, it's Tim's motion, who seconded it?
I did.
I did.
Okay, all those in favor say.
Ken did.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion's carried. Okay, Tim, go ahead.
On the consent agenda items in the minutes, EA called, they had a clerical error, the address should not have been 746 Sturbin's Drive, it should have been 750. So, they sent new prints and the minutes will reflect that we're making a change it tonight to the minutes of the December meeting to indicate that that address will be 750 and I have ordered to correct fire number for it. But just so everybody knows, there are amended minutes in. Okay? That's it.
All right, that's number 14 on the agenda.
Okay. All right. There's motion to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's carried. Okay, committee report.
Who, who made the motion? I couldn't hear who made the motion.
Dan did.
Yes.
Tim, did you make it or did Dan make it? I thought Tim made it.
Dan, Dan, Dan did.
And who seconded it?
That was Ken, I believe.
Dan and Tim.
Okay, Tim, okay.
That'll work.
Well, that's who I heard yes from. Is that who it was or who was it?
Let's go with that, yes.
We'll go with that. I agree.
Committee reports, fire?
Nothing.
Library?
Uh, the library is currently doing a, I don't know if you noticed in the paper, it's called a Buckets to Go program. Due to the COVID, seniors aren't using our libraries, so they're delivering buckets of, uh, books to, uh, senior centers. And the new library director position is going to be posted as of January 11th of this year, so they're moving forward.
Okay.
That's about it.
All right. WTA, uh, they're not meeting yet until maybe later in January. And EMS, there's no meetings that have been held since we last met. Chairman's report. I'll keep it very short tonight. I want to thank all the people who attended the caucus, uh, welcome all the people who are willing to run and serve, I greatly appreciate that. So, uh, go forth and do good. With respect to the roads, I just want to speak briefly on that, uh, for all the people that might be tuning in electronically or over next door or Twitter, whatever it might be. And just refresh the public with respect to how we do the roads. Uh, we talk about this a lot, but we have, uh, over a hundred miles of roads. We contract with the county to do all of that work. They have their plows out continuously. Uh, there's a triage or a ranking order that has priority of roads. As you can imagine, the interstate is number one and then county roads and arterials. And then we have, okay. You guys still here?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And then we get down to town roads. Uh, I just want to assure the public that we have people out on these roads because we're in contract with the county. Uh, they're not going to be plowed to city standards or Walmart standards or, uh, blacktop. They're going to be plowed to rural standards, uh, for town, uh, use. Uh, we do our best when we have spot issues of freezing and refinding, we send people out immediately. Uh, we've had a lot of those, uh, but we're not going to be scraping these down to black, blacktop. Now, with respect to reporting this, I, I just have seen a deterioration, uh, on all fronts in our public comment and, uh, comments such as, uh, people should be fired immediately. Drivers should be pulled out of their truck and fired. Um, we're, we're political people, but we're also people. And, uh, a simple phone call with a neighborly request will get you a long ways. So, you, you don't need to keep posting things on, uh, public posts. And you don't need to send me multiple emails and have your friends send me multiple emails. Uh, I have no way to contact you. I don't know where you exactly live. And, uh, it's counterproductive. So, that's my road report. We're going to do our best. We're going to be in for some cold days and snowy days and, uh, please, please work with us because we have your best interest at heart. That's my report. Public comment, you can only speak on items that are not on the agenda and I'd ask that if you do it, you be courteous and keep it to a minute or two. And we are not allowed to respond to that as supervisors. Is there anyone who would like to speak on public comment? Okay, hearing none, we'll go to item number seven, which is the Marion Shaw lot line adjustment at 832 McCutcheon Road. And Vicky, maybe you can fill us in as to, you, you have, we have three lot line adjustments tonight, but maybe you could just brief us as to how these came about.
They just turned in the CSM's with the lot line adjustments. So, the Marion Shaw one, um, I sent you, we have copies of what it is now, but, um, I also sent you emails because I called Ty and asked for what the new is. So, the point on the left top corner and then the little square at the top right corner, that's getting added in there. And then he gave up some land on the right side, a little tiny strip up and down it, so. And, uh, this one's already been registered, so that's how I found out about that one. And then I called and asked why it was registered when we hadn't seen it.
Okay, Ty, I, Ty Dodge, I see you're here. Are you here for this particular item or for a different one?
I am here for this one and all the other ones as well, so I can, I can answer on, on those. Um, so yeah, the Shaw one, um, actually that was an, just an oversight on my part for, um, bringing this before the town. It didn't come up when we were doing the plat review for the Hidden Waters development and he was doing this land swap kind of concurrently with that. And so that kind of went through, it got recorded and then, yeah, Vicky called me and said, this should have came to the town. And I said, whoops, I, uh, I missed that. But ultimately, um, what we're doing, I don't, let me see if I can share a screen here, um, or not. I could bring up the map, but, um, Mr. Shaw had about eight acres there. And, um, when we started doing the surveying, we found out that, um, there's a fence line on the east side that was off a little bit and on the north side, uh, he wanted to acquire a little more land so that he could touch the, uh, future road that was being built at the time. So, um, Hidden Waters, Mike Hartman, uh, worked with Marion to do that swap. So Marion got a little piece north of his existing property and Hartman got a little piece, um, which would be on the east side of Shaw's property, which is kind of how it's shown on the CSM. And, you know, that's, that's what they ultimately, um, settled on. It's a little irregular on the north side, but that was to kind of capture some trees and then capture the access on the far eastern edge where it'll touch, um, the new town road coming through there, Moon, Moon Glow Road as it's constructed.
So what, what do we need for action items tonight? Ty and Vicky, do you need a motion from us that this has been approved or?
Yeah, we need motions to approve them, to approve the CSM's.
Okay, is there any approval? Can I make the motion, Don? You ready?
Please.
There, I move that we approve the, the lot line adjustments on 832 McCutcheon Road for Marion Shaw and there.
Hang on, Tim. Hang on. Are you sure it's 832 or is it 840?
No, the minutes say, the genesis is 832.
Well, because the, but I think that's.
You're right.
All his stuff, but I think it's actually 840 now that that's the problem. What is it, Ty? Do you know?
I'm just pulling that up so I can verify it here real quick.
Yeah, I, I have a feeling it's actually 840.
I think you're right, Vicky.
832 is the, his other one, but I think this one is attached to 840, not 832.
832 is your old farmhouse, I think, now that you mention it.
That, yep, that's exactly correct. 832 is the, the house along the road. 840 is the address of, um, of the new lot or this lot right here, so.
So it'll be 840.
Yep.
840. The $50 fee then, plus, want to make note that Marion needs to check that plastic shed in the northwest corner to make sure it's set back far enough from the lot line. Otherwise, I'd move approval of this lot line adjustment.
Okay, there's been a motion made. We think it's accurate. Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Tim. It's been seconded by Ken. Is there any further discussion amongst the board members? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, the motion's carried. All right. Ty, are you going to be with us for number eight as well?
Uh, yep.
All right, why don't you brief us on what the Snell Island Lot Line Adjustment is?
So, um, this one for Jeff Schnell and Ira Island, um, it's two lots in the, um, Cedar Hills Development off of Eldro Road. What happened there, we initially did some surveying work for Ira and he constructed his driveway on Lot 44. And during the process of that survey, we found that, um, whoever had built the house on Lot 43, which is, uh, Jeff Schnell's property, um, must not have had a survey. They built too close and had some, some of the pavement was encroaching. And it was real close along a retaining wall, so, um, these two guys got together, um, wanted to get a land swap done, like equal, equal areas between their two properties. So, um, Jeff Schnell got an area that's kind of triangular, 20 feet wide up at Eldro Road and tapering back to an angle point in the lot line. And then Ira acquired a piece, starting at the middle of the lot line, um, as a triangle and went to the back, which is 20 feet wide on the back. So, we've kept the areas the same. Uh, the only thing that, um, has changed is we did reduce the road frontage for Island's lot, which is 44. Um, he now has 40 feet of right away and, um, a little more room in the back. And that, I guess that's the only question that came up, um, during this process that, uh, Ira was concerned if, you know, changing this lot line would, um, restrict his ability to build on the lot. And I told him I did not think so, but that with our approval tonight, we would, we would address that and make sure that, um, everything was still compliant for building on 44. And, you know, by doing this, we've addressed the, the non-compliance issue with, um, the Schnell's, uh, pavement.
Ty, were you copied on our, um, Eric Kennedy's guard, our engineer's email to us?
I was not.
Okay. Brian Work took a look at it and our engineer did as well. And there were no additional concerns that they raised, other, other than the fact that if that driveway gets built in the future, it looked like there was, uh, some significant lowlands there. And, um, some, some significant topography there as you bring the, the driveway in.
Yep. And that actually, um, probably about a year and a half, two years ago now, we did some, some extensive, um, drainage studies and driveway profile and everything because, uh, Lot 44, Ira's lot was, it was a challenging parcel to get the driveway, but that has been constructed. The driveway is constructed in there to gravel. The, uh, building pad is basically constructed. Um, there's, there's a drainage way that goes through the middle there. So we sized culverts accordingly, um, under that drainage way. So, um, basically what he's got now is, is a buildable lot. Um, he just has to, you know, make sure his, his pad is high enough and that's, um, that's kind of been looked at to Zach and, and Matt kind of in our office took a look at the water calc, so I, I'm confident we don't have an issue. The only issue is frontage and, um, since the driveway is, is constructed now, I, I don't see any, any concerns with that, um, getting it built.
Other questions from the board?
No.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
I would move approval of the Lot 43, 44 Lot Line Adjustment for, for the Schnells at 747 Aldro Road and the Islands. And they got a Windsor Woods Path address, but right now it's Lot 44. And that 50, it'll have a $50 fee. And that's my motion.
Okay, that's your motion. Do I hear a second to that?
I, I second it.
Okay, motion by Tim, second by Dan. Uh, any further discussion amongst the board? But Ty, Ty, I guess my only editorial comment is, you know, all the issues that we've had this year with flooding in ponding areas. So, as you finalize all of your work, please double check it with the county and we want to make sure we don't have any flooded out future homeowners.
Yep, and that was, um, actually Zach. Zach in our office had quite a bit of heartburn on this one because he had to analyze drainage, um, all the way from down, um, by Brackey Drive coming up across 94. It comes back down on this side through this property and back down to the interstate. So it's, uh, we spent quite a bit of time looking at this to, to ensure that we had, you know, a buildable height. And if you've driven by that site, you'll see that the pad is, it's built up quite high, um, on the backside of that lot specifically for that reason, so that, you know, we don't, don't ever encounter an issue there.
Okay.
Thank you.
And one other thing is if you could forward me the, um, correspondence you had with Eric and, and Brian, just for my files, and then I can give that to, to Ira and, um, Jeff, that would be great.
I'll make a note here, Ty. There's so much stuff coming across my desk. I just, it didn't dawn on me until tonight that you weren't copied on it, so.
No.
I'll send that to you tomorrow. How's that?
Perfect, yep. There's, I know that, that's kind of how it goes is, um, there's a lot of, lot of correspondence comes through and as long as, you know, as long as we know that, uh, everything's been addressed, that'll, that'd be great.
Okay.
There will be some engineering fees on that.
Um, engineering fees for?
For having our engineer take a look at it.
Okay. Um, and I guess that would be something probably, um, to keep Jeff and Ira in the loop. I, I don't know how much, um, how much we're talking on engineering fees.
It should be, it should not be significant. So Ty, I think you can work with Vicky and, and Chris and, um, Eric on that, so.
Okay, yep, yep.
And they'll break out every, everything for all of their time, but I think it was wise to have that additional eyes and ears on it.
Tim, do you want to add that to your motion?
Yes.
Plus the engineering fees?
Plus the engineering fees. Okay.
Dan, is that fine, Dan?
That's fine with me, yep.
All right. There's been a motion made. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, the motion's carried. Okay, Ty, you get one more?
I only heard two, I only heard two ayes. Did everybody vote? Dan?
Yes, yep.
Susan?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
All right, Ty, let's keep moving, moving along tonight. We got a lot of stuff to keep covering, so Campbell Angle Lot Line Adjustment, can you fill us in on that?
Sure. Um, so Campbell Angle, uh, we initially did some surveying, um, for the angles on Lot 6 is what it is now and Lot 5, I believe is, uh, Campbell. And when we're out there, we found there was a well that, that encroached, uh, onto the property. Um, so Lot 5 on the map actually had the well for Lot 6. Everything's very tight in there. Uh, so we did a lot line adjustment of about eight feet off the backside of Lot 5, or what is now Lot 5, to make everything in compliance there, to get the well in compliance and to get, uh, get, meet the setbacks there. This one is slightly different because this was changing the exterior boundaries of a plat and that, um, requires quite a bit more, um, certificates on the certified survey. I don't know if you looked at this map, but it's five pages long, which is, it, it's kind of an antiquated state rule, but anytime that you change the exterior boundary of a major subdivision, so plat, you have to go through full approval process with this for, for the lot line adjustment and you need to get the certificates, um, from the town. Um, in this case, from the city of Hudson, because we're within their ATZ, it looks like. And you need the owners to all sign off on the map as well, um, recognizing this change. So, in effect, it's just a, it's just a lot line adjustment from any other perspective, but it requires a lot more, um, a lot more certificates on the map to get it complete. Yeah, ultimately, it's just eight feet added from the one parcel, um, Lot 5 onto Lot 6 to bring that well and, and house into compliance.
Okay, I'm going to move, I'm going to ask for a motion, then we can continue to discuss it. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move we approve the lot line adjustment for Lots 5 and 6 at 799 Martin Avenue and that'd be a $50 fee. That we recorded.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that motion.
There's been a motion by Tim, second by Susan. Tim, you were going to say something?
Yeah, that leads me to a question, Ty. Do we have to get a new copy of that, the Glen subdivision and put that on file so that we have this updated version of what hap, now actually has happened with that lot line adjustment?
The, it's kind of odd because what, this CSM changes the exterior boundary, but the recorded plat stays the same, so there isn't a new plat. You, you just have to go through the approvals for it.
Okay, okay. I just, I didn't quite know what that meant, so I did that.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of an odd one because it does, uh, we run into it every once in a while and it just, it just makes, um, swapping land between adjoining owners a lot more of a headache. If they're in a plat and their neighbor is not in a plat. That's pretty much the bottom line.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, here, no further discussion. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion's carried. Thank you, Ty.
Yep, and then I guess just to, the other thing I'd follow up on is, um, I don't always know when these fees are paid, um, to go ahead and record my map. Is that something, Vicky, that you can just?
All the fees have been paid.
All the fees on all three of these have been paid?
I do believe.
Okay, good.
Chris, do you know for sure?
I know Campbell's was paid, I know Schnell's was paid.
I know Campbell's for sure, Marion's was paid.
Yeah, Marion's, yep, all three.
I don't recognize the Schnell payment, but it could have come in.
Yeah, Schnell dropped it off right away after I talked to Ty.
Okay, then we're good.
All right, excellent. And then I'll just provide, uh, recorded copies back to you once I see them on the, on the Shaw one. You've already got it on the other two. Once they complete the, the deed transactions for the, for those areas, then I record the map. Sometimes that takes a little while. I know, I think Jeff and Ira had most of their paperwork done. I don't know Doug worked on the, the Campbell angle to know exactly when that stuff is done. Um, but, you know, it can take a month or two sometimes just to do these and, and they have to do sometimes parcel releases of their mortgage for those little areas. But, um, once it's done, I'll get it over to you.
All right, Ty, are you, anything else you're here for, Ty?
Let me check the agenda, but I believe that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Next is discussion and action on the storage container ordinance. And, uh, Drew, I see you're here tonight. Would you like to, uh, recap as to what your request was and then we can discuss it amongst the board and see what we can come up with here for, for some results?
Sure. Um, I recently learned that there even is an ordinance regarding temporary storage containers. Uh, did not know that, didn't even think that that was a, uh, an issue for the township to be involved with, but I recently had rented a temporary pod. I pulled a bunch of, a bunch of equipment out of my garage and I finished the drywalling job that was started when the house was built in the garage. And, um, I got a letter then from Brian Work indicating that, you know, there is a permit process associated with a, a temporary storage pod. And just sort of felt that that didn't really make a whole lot of sense and wanted to bring the issue in front of, uh, the board here because I discovered a couple of things. Number one, this was passed in 2015 and in five years, um, I'm the only person that's been asked to submit a permit request. Uh, I also discovered there's actually no permit application, uh, that's been, uh, put together for the process. And, uh, just in the three years that I've, I've lived out there now on Moonbeam in the township, um, this past May for sure, there was a 12 Moonbeam had a pot in their yard, uh, temporary, uh, for moving purposes. Uh, just, I think it was about a week and a half ago, 1011 Moonbeam down at the end, um, from where I'm at, had a pot in their yard for temporary moving. And so it's certainly, and, and I've seen them around. I, I certainly noticed the ones behind. And so it's certainly, and I've seen them around. I certainly noticed the ones behind Mr. Wirt's building there. I understand those are grandfathered in. But it seems to me that if the township wants to have an ordinance that, that ensures that these things don't become permanent, it seems that it would make more sense to just transfer this particular ordinance over to the zoning section of the ordinance and simply just make it unlawful or a violation of the ordinance to have a permanent pod. For anybody that has utilized these things, they are extremely handy for, you know, a short-term remodel, for moving purposes and the like. I can't imagine there's a whole lot of people that are wanting to have these there on a permanent basis and ultimately be paying these companies. You know, I had to pay 100, I think it was about 180 bucks a month for this. And so I paid for my, my two months that I needed it and got the job done and it was gone. So this idea that you would require a permit by the township, it doesn't make sense because the whole idea behind a permitting process means essentially the homeowner is getting something for that permit. So when you, when you pull a building permit, for instance, for, let's say, electrical, you have, you have then a permitted and inspected work being done by the electrician that you hire. And so then you get to tell prospective buyers of your property that the electrical work there has been permitted and it's been inspected and it passed inspection. The permit process for a temporary pod, which is a, what I would consider that is a, something that would be of right to the property owner, it, it doesn't require a permit process. And I think that the township can certainly, if it has a concern over these things becoming a permanent structure, so to say, on, on properties, it can simply just have an ordinance that says that it's, it's essentially unlawful. But that's not what it says. It says that you have to get a permit ahead of time to have it there for 60 days and then try to extend it and that type of thing. My suggestion is that they amend the ordinance, put it under zoning, and essentially make it unlawful for a permanent structure, and then simply define what exactly is permanent.
Okay, anything else you want to share with us, Drew?
Well, just the fact that they, it's not enforced. You know, it's, it's enforced against me. My, I suggest it's enforced against me because I'm neighbors with the town clerk and that's the only reason. So I'm, I'm a little bit confused as to why, why they've, they've selected my property and my property alone to enforce something that is not being enforced against anybody else in the township, apparently.
And you have seen the application form that, that Brian has? Have you seen that, Drew?
There is no application form. He handed me a building permit. He handed me a building permit application.
There is one now, Drew.
I, I just asked him today if there was one and he said he just uses the building permit application.
Brian doesn't know what he's talking about. Amanda created the form while he was gone. So we, we have something called the Temporary Storage Container Permit. And I'll just skip reading it. Storage containers are allowed on a temporary basis for up to six months. Temporary storage containers may not exceed a gross area of 450 feet, not exceed eight and a feet, eight and a half feet high or 20 feet long, and for the lot lines. So we did, we discussed this briefly in one of our workshops, Drew. These are relatively new ordinances. We've talked to some other municipalities about that. And, and we are trying to find a way through this so that we are reasonable. We know people move and they have furniture and belongings that need to be brought in. The pods are very handy for that. And yet, as you mentioned, we, we don't want to be in a situation where these become long-term storage facilities sitting out there forever. So.
I agree. I just, I would have never thought in a million years that you would have required a permit to, to go ahead and get it. Had I just simply borrowed a friend's enclosed trailer, there would have been no problem. But what's the difference between parking an enclosed trailer there and, and a pod that is, you know, by its very nature, the fact that you're renting it from a facility that is going to come and get their property at some point? It's, I think there's a difference between the, the ones that you rent on a commercial basis from facilities that this is their job to do and these pods that you can, you know, I've seen online, for instance, people using these pods and they're making them into small houses, for instance. Or they're purchasing, you know, former shipping containers and converting them into storage sheds. I get that the township wouldn't want those on, on people's property permanently. But there's a distinct difference between those types of containers being used on a permanent basis and what, what I did.
Hey Drew, Drew, can I say something? I get your point. I mean, I get exactly what you're saying. I think the problem is, I mean, in this perm, this ordinance, as I read it, it's all containers. So it's not only like what you're getting from that pods. But, you know, I think what we're more worried about is railroad containers. I mean, in my eyes, anyway, I mean, we don't want railroad containers sitting behind everybody's house as a shed. And I think that's what we're after. And I don't know if maybe we, at some point, look at this and separate the two and, you know, look at them differently, but it's all grouped into one ordinance. So, and, you know, I get, I get your frustration with it. But there was an ordinance and the fee was $75. But, you know, you're not going to know that unless you look it up on our, on our ordinances. So I mean, I guess I, I kind of look at it, I kind of look at them both in a different, different way. A railroad container is completely different to me, to a pod sitting in somebody's driveway.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you.
Yeah. And I mean, I probably drive by your house. I live by you too, and I haven't even noticed it. I, I didn't even notice it back when you had it. So I never noticed those pods, but I do notice railroad containers, you know?
Yeah, I agree.
So Drew, for those of us that don't live near you, are your pods gone now? I mean, were they part of your remodel or?
Yeah, it was there, it was there October through mid-December, I believe. It was 58 days total and it was gone.
They're gone?
Yep. It was just one. It was a little 12-foot pod.
Okay. Well, I think your comments are well taken. I think we can go back and continue to look at it. I, I don't have the answers tonight other than I want to accurately share what we've looked into. And as I've shared, this appears to be new to a lot of municipalities. Other board members, do you have any comments tonight?
I just.
I, go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I, I think we should revisit. You know, this is helpful in terms of some additional information. But I guess my inclination towards this particular situation is, is, you know, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a learning experience and, you know, we just, we just move on from here. I mean, it's already gone. So that's my inclination.
Other comments? I'd like to comment too. Yeah, Don. I agree, Drew. I get your point. I get all of that. I, I've had the same experience of the frustration. I've seen one of them containers sit on a resident in the town of Hudson for two years. And Brian Wirt didn't do anything about it. He wasn't enforcing it. I agree with you. That's frustrating. You look at Ted, a kitty corner across from the town hall that does the barn sales. He's got a ton of those trailers. They aren't somebody's friend. They're just there and he's storing stuff in. We do need to look at that, go back as a board and look at that. And the planning commission was the one that originally proposed this in 2015. So the board just approved it. I think we just need to go back and revisit it and decide what do we want in the ordinances for the town of Hudson.
I just wouldn't mind seeing a differentiation between what is clearly a temporary deal and others that are clearly putting them on their property and meant to be a permanent solution for storage or for sheds or small houses or chicken coops or whatever you want to call it.
I agree with you.
But isn't part of having a permit is going to give us an idea of when these are placed? So we have a timeframe. So I do believe that somehow we have to have a permit to know when these things are brought onto people's properties and when they are removed.
That's exactly what, Brian's the one that brought this forward because in other municipalities where he was the building inspector, it was becoming an issue and it was becoming an issue fast and furious. And that's why he's the one that brought the whole ordinance to the town board, explained what was going on, and that's how it got passed back in 15.
That's all correct.
And, and you can certainly have an ordinance that sets those timelines. And like I suggested, you put it in the definition of what is considered a permanent versus temporary structure or a pod, if you will.
But Brian wanted the fees and the permit so, because he has to enforce the 60 days or it has to come back before the board and he isn't going to do it for free, he said.
That's correct, too.
And again, again, you have the option of issuing, I would imagine you have the option. I even researched your entire ordinances, but I have, I have a sneaking suspicion that you have the ability to issue fines if somebody is, is in violation of the ordinance.
And then that costs more money because then it has to go to court.
Yes. And half the time the judge throws it out. So what is the wishes of the board tonight? We, we're going to have other workshops coming up. We could certainly take, take another look at this and revisit it in light of the comments.
Yeah.
I don't see us taking any action on this tonight. I mean, I think Drew's comments are well taken. I think everybody's comments are well taken. I think, I think we need to have some tracking system so we know if it's been there for 60 days or, you know, six months.
Don, I think your working session would be a great idea. We can relook at this again and take in all of our comments and see if we can't come up with possibly rounding some corners, rounding the edges somehow, but.
Well, let, let's do that then, unless we want to just discuss it further. I see Liz is on here tonight. Liz is a great resource. And Drew, if you have additional comments as we're doing that, we'd certainly be open to it. That would be my suggestion for tonight.
Sure. I will note that I, I did fill out the building permit application, but I didn't submit a $75 fee. I didn't have my checkbook with me and they didn't have the ability to take a card. So considering the lack of enforcement for pretty much everybody over the five years, I really wouldn't mind that the fee be waived by the board for this particular instance.
Did you pay a fee?
No, I didn't have my checkbook with me.
Oh. Well, then it's waived, isn't it?
I don't, I don't know.
Well, but I, but I agree with him. He, we ought to, we ought to make a motion to waive it. And I'm willing to do that. I move that we waive the proof. Would, will you, Ken? Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's been a motion made by Tim, seconded by Ken to waive the $75 fee. Until we have our, all of our additional workshops and hearings. And if Drew has a pod in the future, then he'll know about the application and the fee at that time. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. All those opposed? The motion's carried. Okay, thank, thank you, Drew.
And I'll, I can certainly do a, work up a proposed, you know, amendment to that ordinance. I'll forward it on to you if I put something together there.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. I meant to move this up further as well. Is, is Jim Rush here or someone here for Geraldine Jacobs tonight? Item number 12. Do we see Jim anywhere here? Okay, do we as a board want to discuss this without? Has everyone seen the Town of Hudson Plan Commission response?
Yes.
Okay. And it talked about the fact that the farmhouse needed to be razed. They represented on December 21st that Baumster, they've contacted Baumster about tearing it down. I didn't read anything in here about abandoning the well. And I'll just read the motion, I'll read the motion to everyone from the planning commission. Says Bass moved that the plan commission recommended the town board approval of the one lot CSM for Geraldine Jacobs at 948 County Road A. Seconded by Heschler. Work noted that one map has an "outlot 1" label. The county doesn't like that language, but since she owns all of the property, it's different than if she didn't. That's why in the second map, they removed the word "outlot." Motion carried. I had not caught up to Brian. I saw the, approve this. And I've not seen that before. I saw that Brian signed off on one of these. I don't know if that's because that's, that was one of three that they were submitting. That's probably why. Would the board like to make a motion tonight to finally get this approved? Or how do we, how do we? I'm close, but I got, I was close done, but I got some questions.
I do too.
It, it, it deals with two people. One is with, with Vicky and the other one's with Liz. And it's, Vicky, did we get a revised letter from Sarah, from the county, that Jim satisfied everything?
No, no.
And Liz went over everything with Jim Rush in detail, correct, Liz? Of what he needed to get from Sarah?
Correct.
Do you agree? So as a consequence, I don't know if, Don, we should approve that till we know if Jim's got that done by Sarah, the county. I agree. I feel bad about this. It just, it seems like they've stepped into the Twilight Zone and it goes on forever.
I just wonder, did somebody notify him of tonight's meeting that he wasn't, you know? You know, he wasn't aware of tonight's meeting. I mean, maybe, possibly. I don't know. Because I, I thought, and I explained to him that the town board would have to have the clearance of the previous memo from the county in order for you to proceed further. And he was going to do pictures and he was going to address each one in writing and, and review things with Sarah.
Well, then I don't, I don't know how we can act on this tonight unless the board has. I agree. No, I don't. The only concern I had, but I, I'd like to wait, is that Brian's reaction was, when I talked to Brian Wood over at the office, he said, well, he just wouldn't give him an occupancy permit. Don doesn't, Brian doesn't issue occupancy permits in the town of Hudson. So as a consequence, I would say when we go to approve this, we got to issue that no building permit can be issued until that old White House is removed, is razed. You know, but I don't want to do that.
An occupancy permit is generally the final inspection on an, on a building permit for a new house.
But Brian doesn't really give them one, you know?
No, it's, it's just technically not a form or, or whatever, but by terminology, the final inspection approval on a new house. But that's, that's like putting the cart before the horse because, you know, the house is already built and you don't have all of the information you need.
Right, correct. And I agree with you.
I have questions about the existing well that's outside the boundaries for this lot. What's happening with that? That is outside the lot lines.
Well, that's, all that stuff has to, it's all would be in Sarah's letter. That's part of. So, and I don't have a letter from them.
Thank you, Vicky, because that was my concern and, and of course, the septic. And without that information, I don't feel comfortable. And it, and it doesn't. And it, and it doesn't, to go along with the transition and the new policy, it doesn't proceed. Or it doesn't follow procedure on that either. Because it, you know, like I say, he should have addressed each issue from the county and you should have a letter back from the county saying that everything has been addressed. Before you can proceed or should, or before you give approval on this. So that's, that's my opinion. In, in helping you through all of the transition issues.
You know what I, can I throw a thought out, Don? I'd like to move that we deny his application tonight until we receive a letter from Sarah Burrell from the county. That indicates that all of the issues have been addressed to go with this CSM. And put it back on the meeting, whether it's a February or March meeting, when he's got all of that information available.
Then also how about, um, we need some kind of a confident, need to have confidence that that house is going to be raised. It will be gone. We need to have. Something for a follow-up. We can't just take someone's word.
I agree with you.
Which was hopefully what I was hoping we could have resolved tonight, but it might be wise to do that in the form of a motion, Tim, so that. Sarah and Jim know what's going on and I just hope that we can. Sit down and get this thing resolved. Liz, would you be willing to, to visit with Jim one more time? And just ask him where he was tonight and. I have no problem putting it on the February agenda right away and, and working with you and Vicky and.
Well, do we want it on the February agenda or wait until I get a letter? If it's February and don't have a letter, we're going to be back.
All I'm saying is we could take it off the agenda or just like tonight, he could not show if he doesn't have it. But I would have it on there so that we, it gives them an incentive to get this stuff done yet in February.
Yeah, and you've got a couple of weeks before you have to put the agenda together for February, too. So we'll see what we can follow up and I, I will. Follow up and try and reach Jim and see what the status is.
Okay, let's try, let's try and do that so we can amicably resolve this. There must be some way through this, so. Tim, you have a motion? Do you want to restate it? And I'll ask for a second. Okay, I move that we deny the Geraldine Jacobs. CSM for 948 County Road A. Based on the fact that we do not have a revised letter from Sarah Burrell at the county. I can't remember their initials, the department. And I also want to know when the house is going to be raised, the White House. That's my motion. Okay, do you want to add anything to it with the septic or the well? Well, that's all in Sarah's letter, isn't it?
Yep, that's all part of Sarah's letter.
Okay, do I hear?
So he has to address all of those one by one in that letter.
Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Been a motion made by Tim, seconded by Ken. Any further discussion from the board? All those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The motion's carried.
Did Dan have something to say? Did Dan have something to say?
That the Community Development Corporation, Department is what we're supposed to.
Oh, thank you.
So, yeah.
Okay. Well, Liz, Liz, as long as you're here, I'm going to slide back to item number 11, set date for public hearing to amend. The submission deadline in the zoning ordinance. And we're also talking about extending to 15 days from 10 days, the submittal for the, getting the planning commission, but.
Can you talk? I sent you all the resolution and was, it said resolution number 2020-5. That will not be the number of the resolution. It's changing to 2021-1, obviously, because we're in 21 now, once this will happen. But this is what the public hearing is all about, is that resolution that was sent to all of you.
As you know, through the process of doing revisions. Chapter 105 is the zoning code and it specifically stated in there that the plans were needed to be submitted 10 days prior to the meeting. That was not sufficient time. So the suggestion from the Plan Commission and the Town Engineer was to, that 15 days would be. Better suited. So therefore I went through the various sections of the zoning ordinance, chapter 105 that. Has those statements in there for 10 days and this ordinance or resolution that you'll pass or hopefully pass. Would change that date to 15 days. And being that it's a chapter 105 of the zoning code, that requires. A public hearing with two publications of the, of the hearing. And the second one has to be at least 10 days prior to the actual hearing date. And then you hold the hearing and then you can also act on the resolution that same night at your regular town board meeting. So this, the action tonight would just be setting the public hearing date.
So if we were to set the public hearing prior to the February. Town Board meeting, that should be adequate for your two notices?
Correct.
Is there any discussion from the board as to why we wouldn't do that?
Sounds good to me. Do it groundhog day.
I don't think we'd need more than a half an hour to discuss that, do you guys?
No. Agreed.
So do we want to set?
Okay, but it's going to be via Zoom, so I need that information right away tomorrow morning.
I can do that. Do we want, why do we, we'll set it for 6 o'clock. That'll give people adequate time to get on. Does that work for everyone? Okay, so moved. Okay, 6, 6 PM and whatever that date is for a February meeting.
February 2nd.
February 6th. Okay, do I hear a motion made? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? Here is none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? The motion's carried. All right, next we have discussion and action on Carmichael Road for maintenance and speed limit. I know Tim wanted to talk about that a little bit. I would just set it up to say that. We have been in discussions with the city on different road issues. Carmichael is seeing tremendous pressure from all the new development and everything happening. And as you've probably seen, driving that, the city has reduced sections of that from 45 miles per hour. To 25 miles per hour. So, Tim, I know you had talked about that. I said we'd put it on the agenda, but maybe you could share your thoughts and we could discuss this a little bit as a board. Long and short of it, for everybody in the discussion. When, when Don brought up in the discussion about Old Highway 35. Kathryn McIntrick talked about boundary roads, normal maintenance cost sharing is 50/50. And the reason for that on normal boundary roads. The township and the city own 50% of the road to the center of the road. For whatever reason, the city has been choosing not to take the roads when they're annexing land. And so my point of contacting the city to help Don, because they keep canceling meetings and they, they're almost like they're. They're, they're not even giving you the respect that you need, Don. To, when you're discussing Old Highway 35, because when you wanted 9010. They didn't, they said, well, how about 50/50? And so my point is to help that discussion, maybe you need to call a city. Or we need to have a motion to send a letter to the city that says, because it's a Town of Hudson Road. You need to raise the speed limit back up to 45 miles an hour or come to the meetings with a way to, to turn that into a city's road. Not a Town of Hudson Road. Or come to a maintenance agreement or something. Don't, don't just keep doing what you're doing. When I looked at Cratley Lane. Cratley, the village of North Hudson took the north half of Cratley from the Rodden Guncombe Road all the way to Casperson Drive. The town owns to the center of the road on the south side of that road. They did what's supposed to happen when annexation occurs. The city, for whatever reason, for years has been not doing that. And so we're not part of that process. They just send it down to the state. I visited with Liz about this because she asked with the city and here's what probably has to happen, Don. We may have to, as a town, address all of these road issues. And sit down with the city and actually formulate a letter. That request that the state start the process for annexation on those roads to occur. To the city from the Town of Hudson. So we have to request the state do that. Apparently this, at this point, the city can't do it. The state has to do it, but we may be want to make a formal application to that regard. That's what, that's my thoughts on it. I don't know how anybody else feels.
Well, we need to have some sort of agreement with the city that they can't do, keep doing improvements on our roads. And then just walk away.
Right.
You know, they put it, they, they put a roundabout in front of the hospital on our road. And then all of a sudden the state called me and asked me about our roundabout and I said, we don't have a roundabout. And they said, yes, you do. And no, it just turns out that. The city never annexed it, but they built a roundabout on our road without telling us. And same thing here. They put turn lanes, they reduce the speed limit. And by doing that, in essence, they're saying it's their road, therefore. They are responsible for the maintenance.
But yet they never took it. They own land on both sides, but they left, if I understand it right, they left that land underneath the road as a town road. Correct? Correct. Is that, Liz?
If I can give a couple of clarifications there. Number one on the, the annexation part of it is referring to the stage line road area for the roundabout. Because that's actually still state. State property type thing. So that's where that came into play where it's still within the town jurisdiction. So that's where that one is, where we have to go to the state to change that. But the, the other one is on, and on Carmichael Road. The reason they thought that, the city thought that they could do something there is because. There's, there's, in the Town of Hudson. Some of the legal descriptions for the parcels include the town, right, the town road right of way. The church property, actual legal description included. Is my understanding, included the description of the town road right of way. So when they annexed into the city, they annexed in that portion of the roadway also. The Atwood property, legal description did not include the roadway description. So therefore the. West side of Carmichael that's adjacent to the Atwood property technically was not in their legal description, so technically did not get annexed in and is still in the, within the town jurisdiction.
And I think what it points out is, I'm glad to raise this to the board level. We've talked about this in, in. Workshops and other things for keeping the board apprised. So I don't want to get too far into things that I shouldn't be discussing. I think what it points out is the, that we need to not do things on an ad hoc basis. The city has requests into us from a staff level for additional. Remnant pieces of right of way on Carmichael. And I have said that, you know, until we discuss this as a board and meet, we, we don't want to do random pieces. We want to have some type of comprehensive plan. And Liz, I think you're pointing out the very discussion we're having is, you know, if we don't come up with a reasoned approach between new, two municipalities. Carmichael is going to look like a checkerboard. And we already have documentation from the county. Because, and I shared that with the board, is to. How does this work where we have County Road UU? That ends from the town into Vine Street when you're going east-west. And you have County Road A from the interstate heading north. And there's a, there's several additional agreements there between the county and the town and the county and the city. And I, I appreciate the support of the board. I think we need to. Convey to the city the urgency that we want. We want to sit down and try and address these road issues in a comprehensive way. And if it involves annexation of the road, that might make more sense. If it's roadway agreements that, that they're asking for where they want access unto our town roads. Only so they can do additional development. And we remain holding the maintenance on that or we don't get. Maintenance percentages that are amenable to us. Then, then we have to see how hard a negotiators we want to be. And I've, I have, I'm not a weak negotiator. We've, we've done our homework. We've had our meetings. The city has staked out their position on a couple of things. They want to sit down again. They contacted me again on this. But I, I do think, I do think it's time like we're doing with Carmichael that we talk about this because. It, it makes no sense and even from a traveling public, you start out at 45 and then you're down at 25 and then you're up at 45. You hit, and I won't carry this on tonight, but then you hit the intersection of Vine and UU. And three, three corners of that are the cities and the other one is, you know, part of the county. So. I would say for tonight, I put it on the agenda. Tim had some great thoughts. Liz, I appreciate your thoughts. I guess those are my thoughts. Any other comments or discussion on that?
No, I, I agree. We need to negotiate with the city. I mean, you know, it's, if that's a, a town road. You know, what would prevent us from digging a hole there and put two horses on each side of it and say, you know, we're working on this and we'll get to it, you know? In due time. I mean, you know, you know, the city wouldn't, you know, if we weren't cooperative, the city, you know, wouldn't be happy. So. It just makes sense for them to take it over.
Correct.
I think we need a motion to work on a maintenance agreement or having them take it over because it's going to come up on our Pacer report. The state's going to start contacting me and asking me about these things. That's how it always comes up. When you start expanding the roadway. Then they're going to want to know and we didn't do that and. You know, so it's, it's just going to become an issue. So somehow we need emotions that we get going on this and get it moving along fairly quickly.
So what is that motion?
Do you think it should be a letter?
Well, I think we need to make, I, I mean, I don't care. Send them a letter that we need, I mean, we need to work on. Either a maintenance, we need, I mean, this is what the state will tell me. They either need to take the road. Or they, we need a maintenance agreement because the state's going to ask about that. Because this is going to, it's going to affect. You know, the Whistler report, Pacer report, whatever. You know, that's how, that's how, that's how it got brought up with the roundabout because obviously that gets rated differently on your report. And so when we start filling out these and trying to describe what roads we have. And who's this who's, it, that's, then they ask and then I'm, that, you know. So we need to come up with some sort of agreement to prove to the state that, yeah, we know and this is how it works and every.
I, I don't think a letter, I don't think a letter would be meaningful, Tim, are my personal feelings. I, I think if the board made a motion tonight to say, you know. Please, you know, direct, direct the town chair to. Work with the city and, and let the city know about the board discussions tonight and the urgency of it on our part. I, I think that would help continue these sit-down meetings. Okay. The motion will be that we direct the chair to talk to the city on all of the roads that are adjoining the city property. That they work to come to a maintenance agreement or annex the roadways underneath them within a year. So that we can answer the state's questions. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I'm thinking too, just on, we've got this, all this development on the Atwood property. If we were to just say to them, look, you know, you've got, you haven't gotten a permit from us to make any improvements there. We want to see, you know, we want to see you go through the process. I think that would. You know, I wonder if that would, you know, bring it to attention that, you know, something needs to be done.
And that was my, that's why it was a knee jerk reaction, Don, but it was calling and telling them to change the speed limit back to 45. It would have gotten a reaction. You know what I mean? Because Dan's got the same point. They're not doing what they need to.
Right.
You know?
You know.
I'm I'm not not discussing it tonight. There are just certain things I don't want to say publicly, so I I would say, let's let's leave it at that and let me continue to visit with them. And if you're comfortable with that. I I think it's good for them to know that the board's fully briefed and fully understands what we're intending to do. So that would be helpful to me.
I'm I'm with it.
Any other discussion tonight? Okay, there's been a motion made, it's been seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Sorry, that was my husband.
It was a good one.
Uh, we have communications items for future agendas. Any any issues that the board members have had on their mind tonight? And Don, attorney, okay, town attorney or other town staff. As you know, we continue to see these threatening lawsuits coming at us. And my response to that is that we have successfully defended all of our lawsuits. Under my tender since we've been here. And to the extent that people want to continue to legally pursue their avenues, they have a right to do that. And we will vigorously defend our rights and actions as a town. So stay tuned.
I I got something on that. Is there any way to get some of our legal costs back for our town attorney? On some of that being a being he was working with Ms. Carbrell?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't want to get too deep into the weeds there either, Ken. The the simple answer is no, because of the way the different things were filed and gone forward, that that was not part of that. But there were multiple issues there that we had to cover and. Did so over New Year's Eve and Sundays and everything in between. And, you know, there's continuing concerns, so.
Even in, even with just this case, I mean, if every person in the town decided to file a lawsuit or file an injunction with the county against us on everything that we do. And we have to get our attorney out, the town would be broke, I mean, we'd have to.
Right.
You know, I I mean, it's just, at some point, some of these costs have to be recouped. And I know you probably don't want to discuss it publicly, but.
I I don't, I I just, I just want, I just want to, I just want to say this kind of what I did, and I want to end positively tonight. I I I, for the people that are listening publicly, it's kind of what I said about snowplow. You know, but when the day is done, we we all are neighbors and friends. And at some point, both sides have to find some way to compromise. So those are my comments. When the pandemic is done, there'll be other issues, but we need to find a way to live together. So. Any other issues tonight?
Vicky, you, I didn't print that revised agenda, is there another item that we're supposed to do something with that seven fifty Sturbin's Drive?
Well, did you want to make a motion on it? I mean, you talked about it at the beginning, but I said it was number fourteen. I mean, did you want to make a motion that it should have been? I mean, what you talked about, do you want it, the motion, or do you just want the note that it was brought up in this meeting? I mean, a motion would be better.
Uh, yeah, I'd rather have a motion.
We could have, so my note, this is my note. The new building at seven fifty Sturbin's Drive was approved at the December board meeting at seven forty six Sturbin's Drive. There was a typo on the site plan. The corrected site plan is on file showing the correct address as seven fifty Sturbin's Drive. Do you want that as a motion?
Yes.
Do I hear a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that?
So I will put that note, so this motion. I will put on here, I will put a new note at the bottom of this that says, please refer back to the. December minutes. And then I'm gonna put a note on the December minutes that says, please see the January minutes as the same thing. That the building at Sturbin's Drive should be seven fifty so that twenty years from now, when someone wants to figure something out and they look at one and not the other, vice versa. It it'll revert them back and forth to make sure that everybody knows that it really should have been seven fifty.
Thank you.
That clear as mud?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, there's, it's gonna be a quiz on it, okay, there's been a motion made, that's your motion, it's been seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, motion's carried. Any other business tonight? Thank you, thanks for coming. And we'll talk.
All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, could I just ask one thing?
Yes.
Can you hear me? When I was just listening about the Atwood property and such, I'm just curious. Do are there parcels all over the township that don't go to the center line or are some? To just a ditch line or is there, I mean, why wouldn't the Atwood one have gone to the center of the road just because it was so old?
I think, I think the way the way I would answer that is generally throughout the town. All of the roads underneath the blacktop are in the town, you know. But but where we hit a boundary road, where we where we are adjacent to a this different municipality. That's after we have the ability, hey, if you're if you're annexing property from us, then you should annex the road at the same time. Because ultimately, that's going to be.
I kind of thought they all went to the center line, but just like on a boundary road.
Maybe I, maybe I can help that a little bit because I got into where I was confused as I started to cut the trees with the inmates. The county owns all of the land underneath the county roads, so that road right of way is owned by the county. In the town of Hudson, all the residents own to the center of the road. So when I start cutting their trees in their yard, we have authorization to do that. But they really do own to the center of the road, so the city may not be thinking. Because I don't know if the city owns to all the land underneath the roads normally, Don, I don't know that.
I I don't know.
Maybe that's part of the issue, maybe that's part of the issue, you know what I mean?
But which is why we need the, when it comes to Carmichael that, we we need the county's involvement as well. The the county is told, yeah, as they go through cities, because they're not responsible for sewer laterals and water lines and those types of things. You know, they have maintenance agreements that allow them to do that, but they maintain their road. Their their underlying fee title to their road. So, okay, good question, Maggie, anything else?
That'll be it, thank you.
Maggie and Tony and Liz and anyone else who's still with us, so. All right, I'm gonna end the meeting tonight, it's been a motion to adjourn, was it seconded?
I'll second it.
Who seconds it, Tim?
Jim.
All those in favor say aye. I know we don't have to, but we do it. All those opposed, okay, motions, motion is carried, thank you, everyone. Good night.
Good night.